Welcome, everyone, to the March 7th meeting. On the agenda today, we have a number of items, and I've changed the order slightly because Donna Brewer, our town council, who is here, has a tight schedule this evening. So we are going to put the accessory dwelling unit proposed by law first. Next up, we'll do the residential inclusionary housing by law, and then the signs by law, and then we'll do the minutes. And then, last of all, I have sort of an administrative, exciting administrative announcement. We don't get exciting announcements often, so I welcome that when that happens. All right, so to start, accessory dwelling units, a little bit of an introduction. This is something that Patrick worked on. The select board supports this. Donna has made edits to make the wording consistent with our definitions and table of uses. I sent that around to everybody, and I think Jennifer has copies here of that for anyone who's interested. With that, I am just going to make a motion to open the public hearing for accessory dwelling units. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, to start, we received some comments from Patty Kaya, Peter Strauss, Steve Schatz, and Bruce Blair. In terms of, I'm going to just go through a few things on running, on how this, this is a public hearing. It's a legal process, and I'm just going to go through how the public hearing is. It's similar to our special permits, and I'm just going to run through that. So the following procedures will be followed. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person will be permitted to speak at a time. All discussion will go through the chair. All parties will conduct themselves civilly. I know we always do. Arguments between parties will not be permitted. So Patrick is here. Anyone else from the select board? No. So he is here, and, you know, he can answer questions. And we'll start by, one at a time, no deliberations amongst board members, please. And we'll start by allowing board members to ask Patrick questions. So why don't I'll start at the center of the table. Wayne, do you have any questions?
Well, I'd like to hear some discussion, I guess, about an explanation.
So again, we're not, we're not, no deliberations. If you have a question, now is the time to ask it.
Well, I don't have a direct question, though, not yet.
Okay. Carl, any, any questions?
Not really. I mean, I reviewed all this stuff, but, I mean, I feel like, you know, I mean, you know, there it is. I don't, I don't see, I don't see any big issues.
Okay. Nancy, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. Can I reserve my questions for later?
Now is the time to ask questions, once the public hearing is closed. No, no more, you know, questions to the, to Patrick or, or?
This is a goal. I mean, we're not going to be able to hear what people say and then ask?
So here's the process. Let me go through the process. This is legal, legal proceeding. The process is that, at this point, the public hearing is open, and we can ask questions of the applicant. That's Patrick. And then I will take comments, and I'll ask for people to speak in favor. And then I'll ask for people to speak who are opposed. And once that portion of the hearing is, when, once I have the sense that everybody has had a chance to ask a question or make a comment, then I will move, you know, to close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing. And at that point, the board can deliberate. Okay? But all your questions should be asked before the public hearing is closed.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. So Marie?
I don't have a specific question for Patrick right now.
Okay. All right, Liz?
Neither do I. I, well, we discussed last week.
Gary?
I'm good right now.
Okay. I actually have two questions. One question, Patrick, I have is, in, in the, in the draft that you did, under section, so if you look at the model from the state, right?
Yeah.
Under section four. Let's see. Let me get there. It's 4D. The, the model by law states, "Any new separate outside entrance serving an accessory dwelling unit shall be located on the side or in the rear of the building." And in the draft that you have worked on, you've got instead, the unit shall?
What number?
D, four?
No, what, on my draft, it's a?
It's draft.
A 2D.
Four, two. Yeah, 2D. I'm sorry. Correct, 2D. "The unit shall include a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor," and so on. And I just wanted to, I'd just be interested to hear your thinking as to why you didn't go with the idea that the template uses of a, of a, an entrance located on the side or on the rear. And they explain that, you know, in their comment, they explain, they say, "This is to ensure that the principal dwelling has the appearance of a single-family dwelling, however entrances could be combined in a single location." And I just wanted to know your thinking on that.
I, I felt that, that if somebody's house was configured with a front door, and there were two entrances to two separate areas in it, that, that it wouldn't be a terrible thing for us to maintain that. Having said that, I don't have a strong opinion on this one. If the planning board wants to recommend a change as well.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. That's actually my only question. I was just curious about that.
Kayla, just a point of order. Because town council's on, who's very familiar with these bylaws, will she be able to answer questions once you close the public hearing?
Donna?
I can answer questions at any time.
Good question. Thank you. All right, so next up, I'm going to ask if, if anybody wishes to speak in favor. Could you please come to the podium? Identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Anybody here who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor? Okay. Next, we have, I'm asking, do we have anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Same thing. If you wish to testify, please either come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or introduce yourself over Zoom. Anybody here who wishes to speak in opposition?
Well, I'm not sure whether you would regard my speaking as opposition or not.
Who is this, please? Here.
Peter Strauss.
Okay, please. Your name and your address, please.
Peter Strauss, 9 Oak Street in Stockbridge.
Okay, thank you.
And, and you've received comments on the proposed by law, which includes some proposed amendments to it. And I would say that, you know, I'm in favor of having an accessory dwelling unit by law. I think there are some issues with this one. There's a kind of a disconnect between, as it's written, there's a disconnect between the really very desirable policies that Patrick White has asserted as, as the reason for this and the way it's worded. Because all of those assertions are about providing opportunities for long-term rentals for people of modest means and the like. But there is nowhere in the by law that indicates that preference or any kind of limitation on short-term rentals. So, except one at a time. And so I, what I've suggested is, first, is the introduction of long-term as an idea which is central to the, which ought to be central to the accessory dwelling unit by law. The second element, which, which resonates in some way with past disputes in the community, is that this is for primary residents only. And I certainly understand the wish to avoid commercialization through this means that could indeed drive rentals out of sight and, and make it hard for the moderate-income people that Patrick is, is very commendably looking to invite to participate. But I think there are ways of permitting second homeowners to create accessory dwelling units for long-term rentals that ought to be considered. And the amendments that I've suggested point in that direction. I can't think of any reason why a second homeowner should not be able to have an accessory dwelling unit that is for a long-term rental, serving the very commendable purposes that Patrick has in mind, while I understand that short-term rentals are a problem. And so the language I submitted to you limits short, any short-term rental to periods of time when the principal owner is, in fact, in residence. And with that, I think I've said enough about, you have, you have my submissions. I'd be happy for any questions about them, but I think that that lets you know where I'm coming from.
Patrick, just state your name.
Oh, Patrick White, 81 Hawthorne Street. Peter, first, thanks for your comments. I think there's a bit of a disconnect, though, in terms of how you've framed the by law and the opportunity for ADUs. I don't, I didn't write this and don't envision this as a way to limit short-term rentals, or for that matter, to focus on moderate-income folks or long-term rentals. I actually see for, for residential ownership of an ADU, I think that one of the things that, that really helps a family afford a house in Stockbridge at the prices we have, and those prices average over $600,000, so that's not really a moderate-income home that, in terms of a family income, that the goal here is to have enough cash flow in that second unit to help affordability. There are many people in the Berkshires right now who have actually been able to afford homes in the Berkshires by having a unit on site that they rent as a short-term rental. So while somebody wants to use it as a long-term rental or a short-term rental, the goal here is somebody can only afford normally, or is comfortable with a, let's say, $450,000 mortgage, that they have a way to augment their income to get up to that $600,000 or $700,000 mortgage that would be, that would be required in, in potentially a nice home in Stockbridge. So, you know, it's not the intent to, you know, you know, force folks into choosing what type of rental they want to use. Rather, it's to look at what the mortgage cost is for homeownership, and to give folks an opportunity to rent that unit, whether it's short-term or not. And once you look at it through that framework, and you get to the inception, I think we need to make to ensure that the homeowner is there when they rent out a short-term rental, potentially. Because I think what we want to avoid, all, all homeowners in Stockbridge, I think, have a concern around neighborhoods going the way of, of a whole lot of short-term rentals rather than, you know, or occupied houses. And if we put two short-term rentals on a single property, then we, we effectively increase that cash flow and make it much more likely that investor owners will purchase that unit rather than, than a part-time resident or full-time resident. And that is what I was trying to avoid. So, you know, I think that, as we look at it, you know, I believe, and Donna, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the way the draft is written, that the owner has to occupy the other unit when it's rented.
So Donna?
You can do a second term homeowner's.
Excuse me, excuse me. Donna, could you speak to that, please?
So the by law, as written, says that the primary unit has to be owner-occupied when the second unit, the accessory unit, is being used as a short-term rental.
So in other words, it's not limiting second homeowners. They just have to be there. And that, and that protects us from having two rentals at once, which is a goal of how I wrote the by law.
Okay, thank you.
Affordable housing.
Mark, come on up. Introduce yourself, please.
Sorry, I whiffed when you asked for people in favor. It kind of got by me, though.
That's okay.
Ghosts, 15 Cherry Street. I'm, I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, so that's a thing occupying my brain these days. And I've always kind of liked this idea of the, these, these smaller units. And I think it's one good way to address the affordable housing issue in the town. As we've been looking into this, we're finding that even low-income, affordable-income housing is costing between $400,000 and $500,000 per unit. If we look at what's been happening in, in Great Barrington, over by the Bentley Street area, and what's being talked about for Brushwood over in Lennox, these are all close to $0.5 million. The marketplace wants to build $0.5 million and up property, just the way Detroit wants to sell you an SUV instead of a Yugo. The builders want to do big stuff. We have to bend the will of the marketplace to meet the needs that we're identifying. And this, to me, looks like a marketplace solution, to some degree, for the shortage of affordable housing, because people who are homeowners have an incentive to make an investment and create another unit of housing that probably is much lower cost than the kind of things that are being developed by people from, from the ground up. So this is a way to pull the marketplace into helping to solve our problem. It also can provide some additional cash flow for people to keep their homes, pay their taxes, and get by here if they have this additional unit. I think it could be good to workforce housing. These are small units. I, I don't know if there's a square footage limit on this, six or 800 feet?
Nine hundred.
Okay, well, not too bad. I think it's a way for a couple or a single who are workforce folks in the region to be able to, to afford to live in Stockbridge. We rely on so many of these people to serve the community, and they have to leave at the end of the day and go find cheap housing in Pittsfield or someplace else. This could, could address that. The short-term rental thing is a really tricky area for, on so many ways. It's more attractive for people to do short-term rentals, because they can charge so much money and not have to deal with the headaches of a year-round tenant. And I, I worry about the fact that people could say, "Well, I can rent this thing for three or four months during the right time of year and make as much as I'm going to make 12 months for somebody who actually lives here and works here." And then it could encourage more and more use of these as short-term rentals, and then less work for the homeowner to have to deal with somebody there all the time. So that part of it troubles me a little bit. It seems a little heavy-handed to say, "No short-term rentals. It's your property, but we're telling you how you can use it." That, that also bothers me, but I just, that issue is something that percolates a little. Anyway, just to say, I think it's, it's a good way to get more affordable housing done. The rate we're going to be going on our trust, it's going to be very slow, a little victory here, a little one there. This is to get people in the community to actually help you to work. By the way, I, I just read the, thanks to Liz, the?
Carl? I'm sorry. This is comments only.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Josh, come on up and introduce yourself.
Josh, 62 Merwick Road. How does anybody figure that short-term rentals is going to help anybody stay in the community if it's a short-term rental out of these places? Like the gentleman just sat here, they got the long-term rentals.
I think that the question is, if, if, if you're, if you own the house already and you're living there, because, and you can afford it because you've got a rental unit. There's some folks, like Linda Chafroff, who came in for a special permit about a month ago, who actually agreed to make that a non-short-term rental, you know? So, you know, something over 30 days, or, you know, a lease or whatever.
Well, what's the median income of, of the average person in Stockbridge? I heard $50,000.
$42,000 for an individual and $62,000 for a family.
So many people that actually own property are going to start down to tens of thousands of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars and putting units on their property. This is, this is money that's going to come in from outside the town, the people that have it. They're going to put these units on the property, and it will benefit them to subsidize their second homes and stuff.
Josh, can you, hang on for a second. You, you, you know, I'm actually in that income range, and I could buy a, a prefab house for around $100,000, that'd be this size. I could plop it on the yacht, and I live across from Tangerwood, and I'm not saying I have any plans to do this.
Oh, no, you're not going to do that.
No, I wouldn't do it. I'm not doing that. But I'm just saying that when you look at what, what you might be able to rent that for at $300, $400 a night, you actually can afford to stay in your house a little longer, and the cash flow actually works out pretty well. Now, that house, same house could be used as a rental, probably for $1,000 a month, who knows? But even at that rate, you can pay for that prefab house. You know, I'm going to put it right next to Kate's house, and, you know. I, I'm just saying that, I think that, I think that any, any, you know, I met some people in Bullards Woods six months ago, young couple, all right, who were telling me this is exactly what they did in Lennox. They had a house that was a little bit out of their reach, and they renovated a portion, like, using Lennox's ADU by law, like, an above-the-garage kind of deal, and it actually allowed them to afford a Lennox house and move from Pittsfield. And that's all I'm looking for, is basically give that young family a chance to choose Stockbridge to raise their family, and in doing so, you know, get the full-time residents and children in this community that I think that we all recognize that we, we have to have, you know?
I, I understand where you're coming from, Patrick, but honestly, I, I don't see it. And $100,000 for people to start throwing around is, is a lot of money if you have a median income and you have money going elsewhere. It's just, I just don't see it. Here's my opinion on it.
Maria, you look like you have a question.
I can't ask a question, right?
No, you can ask a question.
Why does one negate the other? Why is it a problem for people in town who want to do what Patrick does, and for second homeowners to also have an ADU? They're not even probably going to be arguing, you know, competing for the same market of people, but is there a problem with the second homeowners, homeowners having?
Donna, please correct me if I'm wrong. This doesn't disallow the second homeowner from having an ADU. It only disallows a second homeowner while, to be occupying?
Yeah.
The primary home at the time, because we don't want to allow two short-term rentals at the same time. So if they're going to have a short-term rental in that ADU, they've got to be there.
But if they have a rental in their ADU, and they're there in the summer?
Long-term rental?
Yeah.
Yeah, so sure.
They can still have their person continue to live in their house if they go away for the winter?
If it's a long-term rental.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not an ADU consideration.
Donna?
So the requirement that the primary unit be owner-occupied attaches to a short-term rental, not a long-term rental.
So if they're here all summer, they could do a short-term rental. But if they're, if they're gone in the summer and they decide they want to rent both units, they can't do that. And that's, I think, reasonable, because we allow that, and you're going to get into a situation where the, the investor?
Okay.
Cash flow is just so high that they were going to have?
I was trying to respond to Peter's, Mr. Strauss's?
Yeah.
Concern about people with second homes being able to rent long-term. He was one, but long-term?
It allows it.
With, remember, Patrick, that you added in that it had to be, the ADU has to be in a residence that is the owner's primary residence and domicile. So there are going to be some second homeowners who don't consider Stockbridge to be their domicile.
Wayne?
When we solve that issue of discrimination against the second homeowner by allowing only one unit to be rented at a time, no matter what, you can't rent both, but you're not discriminating against the second homeowner population. You're still allowing for the ADU, but you're, I feel it's discriminatory to make it be that, that they have to live there a certain number of days a year, what have you. And, and you sort of solve both issues with allowing only one unit to be rented at any given time.
Donna, what do you think of that?
That, we could probably make something like that work.
What do you guys think of that? Or can we ask?
We can, Donna? That's the thing we need to discuss after the public hearing closes?
Well, you can discuss it now. You're just, after you close the public hearing, then you're going to be deliberating on what your recommendations are going to be. But if you want to work out with the public right now what that language might work, or look like, you are free to do so.
Oh, that's much easier. Okay.
Couple of hands up. Kate, there's a couple of hands.
Oh, thank you.
Should we still stay on this topic?
Yeah, let's, yeah, stay on this topic. Okay. So I just want to finish up with Wayne on this, on this thread. So what do you guys, I mean, does that, what do you think of that?
I like that. I think it's simple, and I think it addresses at least those two items of concern.
And I, I hesitate to use the word discriminate, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so can you just summarize? I'm sorry, I got a load of stress.
So Wayne's suggestion is that we simply allow one rental at a time on the property. And I think that, I think that one of the things that, to that, you know, Michael and I have been doing demos with, with, we did one with Granicus, we're doing one with GoGov. These are platforms that allow us to track who's renting what on the short-term rental market. And by implementing that, which I believe you'll see a proposal to implement as part of the next fiscal year, at least that's our current plan, we'll see what my colleagues think of it, that would give us a capacity to track whether or not people are, are following that rule, which goes to enforcement.
So how, that's, that was my next thing, enforcement. So how would that be tracked? How can we track that?
Well, we can look at, we can look at the parcel. I mean, these are systems that basically track across 50 platforms, short-term rentals, and if they show up, then you know.
Will the state accept that information?
What information?
From the tracking information, the data from Granicus.
What do you mean, the state?
Well, the Department of Revenue, like, if you give them information, say, "Okay, you know, here in Stockbridge, you know, we've got 30, we've, we've?"
This would only be for, this would, the state, we don't, the state doesn't provide us with any information other than the street address.
If you say you find that, like, 30, 30 properties that are being used as short-term rentals have not, are not registered to pay taxes.
Can we drop a dime to the DOR? I don't know. I, I do know that we can send them compliance letters automatically with the system that says, "We noticed you haven't registered your short-term rental. Please do," you know? Yeah. And, and then, you know, you, it's a degree then that we?
So it's incumbent on the town to make sure that happens?
But it's an automated process. The letters go up from some server farm, you know, somewhere in Iowa or something.
But so you send a notice now, you know, "Okay, we know this number, X number are not registered. Can you do anything beyond sending them a notice?"
Yeah, you can do many things. But to the point of the conversation here, what you could do is you could flag it for, if there are two units that are available from one parcel, then send them a note saying you're breaking the by law, you know, and then start to find them.
And would that fall to the selectmen, to the assessors?
To the town, to the town minister's office. Yeah.
To that end, something that might make it a little easier, because if you allow both units to be rented, just not at the same time, if you go to Airbnb, you're going to see both units offered, which is, might trigger you to think that they're actually being offered at the same time. So the question I have is, do you want to just make the accessory dwelling unit, the smaller unit, the only one that can be rented, whether it's short or long-term?
Except that for seniors, seniors may be moving out of their larger house into the ADU, and maybe looking to rent their larger house. So, you know, I think that, I think that, I think it's a good question, and we'll have to take a look at it, but I don't want to limit seniors' ability to rent their larger home and, and live in the one-bedroom, 800 square foot area.
Okay.
Okay. Now, Carl, I'm sorry I cut you off. Everybody, this is, I've had plenty of special permit public hearings, but this is my first proposed by law public hearing. So, Carl, I apologize. You wanted to say something to Mark.
Well, when we're talking about affordability, you know, I know that that's an overall concern for the town, and, and it affects our zoning. And, and, you know, how is that calculated? Who reports on what's affordable?
Well, this is, this would be creating affordable units. This would be creating any unit, just a second unit. Because a lot of folks, now, somebody wanted, they could turn their ADU into an affordable unit, I mean, you know, but they're not under any obligation to do that. And affordability is tracked by, 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 you know, there's a? And affordability is tracked by, 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 you know, there's a median family, median income, you know, area median income percentages that have to be reached for someone to qualify for affordable, but this is the other bylaw that really deals with affordable housing as it's defined as a, as a legal term.
I mean, the existing wording that we have on the books is interesting. It actually does speak to affordability, but my sense is that it's never been enforceable. You know, it does actually reference the state requirements for affordable housing.
And I guess my other question is, I've read it three times now, but, I mean, the, the right of first refusal? I'm not sure refusal this is. Purchaser of an affordable housing in a developed
No, that's the other bylaw.
Yeah, we're not
Oh, okay. No wonder I'm confused. Okay. No, it's okay.
All right, so I guess I have a question for you, Donna. We've had some, some suggestions here, and I'm just wondering, should we continue the public hearing to allow some of these things to get fine-tuned, or, you know?
I mean, Patty has another chance.
Patty's got her hand up for us.
There's a lot of questions.
All right, I will, I will get to, I just, let me just get the answer from Donna, and then I'll get to Patty Kaye.
Hello, everybody. First, I want to let everybody know, I've switched to my phone, so that's not me on the camera. I'm getting on the road. But after your question, Kate, yes, what we can do is, whether you open or close the public hearing tonight, it doesn't really matter, we should have a second night where we will go over a draft that incorporates all the changes that you guys think you might want that come up tonight.
Sounds really good. Okay, Patty?
Thank you. To reiterate a couple of points, first
I'm sorry, your name and address, please?
Patty Kaye, Housatonic Road. First, I'd like to say that I am actually a supporter of ADUs. I think that was sort of asked in the beginning. I'm a big supporter of ADUs, and I hope that the town embraces ADUs as a form of microhousing to support so many of the town's goals. However, I am, as everyone on that board knows, firmly against the current language, and I am encouraged by the conversation that's occurring tonight to make some changes to that language. I'd like to reiterate how much I support Wayne's comment, that if we just limited the language, that you're only allowed to rent one unit at a time, one simple sentence, which solves so many of my problems with this current language, because it would reduce all language related to domicile or owner occupied, any of the other restrictions that are both discriminatory against part-time residents, unenforceable on very, various levels, or just create kind of a climate of confusion. So I can't say enough, thank you, Wayne, I just appreciate that, that's really appreciated, that kind of clarity, that one simple sentence. Because I think it's important in this discussion that we not lose sight of the fact that if you eliminate 50% of the town's property owners, that you're undermining your own stated, one of your own stated goals, and that's to add moderately priced rental units to the housing stock. So why would you, why, there's no reason why the town would want 50% of the homeowners to not be able to contribute to that important goal. And also, by simplifying this and saying that you only have one unit at a time that is rentable on any property that has an ADU and a single-family dwelling, it also eliminates the bizarre permitting process, reneging the permit if, if it's a part-time resident, or madness that I couldn't imagine was going to stay in this bylaw. And third, it actually addresses Patrick's specific concern, because I asked about this at the previous planning board meeting, and he said, and I'm paraphrasing, but he said he could not in good cut, excuse me, in good contents, let there be two rental units on any property. And, and what we're, what we're, in this discussion finding out, is that all we need is one simple sentence to address that. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And I look forward to the next iteration of this language, and I look forward to reading it and hearing about it. So thank you for another opportunity for that.
Thank you for, okay, thank you for your comments. Oh, okay, go ahead.
I think that, I think this is possibly a good, good, first off, Patty, thank you for your comments and for your rather sensitive memory, you made a lot of great points in it. I just want to remind the folks in the audience and the board that the purpose, at least as I wrote it, my intent here, was to foster residential ownership year-round. I spent last night with our fire department, all right? And I'll tell you, eight of them, eight of our 16 gentlemen are between 60 and 69 years old, and we had to up our insurance to get them, the 65 and older's, to be able to, to be able to serve, and they can't serve up for 70. There's no legal way to do it, all right? We simply have to encourage, not just because for sentimental reasons, because this is the town of Norman Rockwell, and, and how different this was than, you know, Kate or Wayne or Garrett when we were kids, but we have to encourage residential ownership, because if we don't, there's not going to be anybody to sit on these boards or serve as volunteer firemen, or do any one of a host of activities that this town requires. Now, if you think that we can give a rental unit as part of this process to build consensus to second homeowners without eroding the competitive advantage that I was trying to create, frankly, for full-time residents here, I'm fine with it. But be aware that this purpose is to increase affordability for people who live here, because the, the numbers are scary, 2%, 2.4% of this town is between 40 and 49 years old of full-time residents. Think about that, at the, at the, at the height of your earning potential, when you're raising your kids or getting ready to go off to college, 2.4% of this town, compare that to the median around the state, and we're somewhere between a half and five times fewer young people in this town, in the decade range, and somewhere between double and triple, even in Berkshire County, let alone the state, in the elder, in the older range, 60 and up, all right? The numbers don't lie, and, you know, the, I'll just say one other thing, and I don't mean to lecture everyone, but, you know, we have, we have a, a, you know, we had, we had a document called the Diagnostic Report from the Stockbridge Zoning Bylaw that a lot of you worked on, that was released in 2019.
Two.
What?
Just two of us.
Well, yeah, but I know if I were going to do that. The cost of housing in Stockbridge was on the lines of many people who spoke to me in the interview sessions. This is a problem that's not unique to Stockbridge and is found in just about every community that's a highly desirable place to live. It's a regional problem that's caused by market forces that drive prices up due to shortages of supply, increased demand, and influx of people from other places who can afford to pay more for housing than most local residents. Stockbridge should not choose to become a town that is unaffordable to local residents, nor to choose to be a haven for part-time residents. Rather, its attractiveness due to location, scenic beauty, and cultural assets resulted in demand-driven changes in its real estate market that have in turn changed the demographic and social complexion of the town. This has resulted in some long-term residents moving to nearby towns such as Langley, Barrington, where prices are more affordable. And further in this document, it calls for exactly the kind of strategies around, around ADUs and around the residential inclusionary bylaw that I tried to draft. But this is written four years ago, guys, and why do we spend 20 or 30 or 50 grand to put these, these consulting reports on a shelf? You know, we're going to have to figure out how to take action to make progress on these issues, and I have absolutely no problem with this board driving the changes that you want to make to this. I, I am happy to, to, you know, tap out and let the rest of the wrestling team take this one. I don't need to be involved in these changes. I think you guys are fair, and you'll come up with good, good changes. I just think we got to address these issues. Thanks.
Okay, so, do you feel that Wayne's solution, Wayne's idea, is
I think it's great.
compatible with, with what you're, with what Housing Trust and what you folks have discussed?
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to defer to the planning board, so
I'm asking you a question?
If I think it will? Yeah, look, and I think if you add an ADU to a, to a, I have no problem with it. I think Wayne's likes, you know, look, I can read the room, and I see who's on, and I know what their concerns are. I would rather see ADUs for residents, and, and if that means that adding an ADU for, with a one-rental-only option for all homes in Stockbridge, I, I think that that's a reasonable compromise that still meets the goals.
Mark, I'm, I'm just, because you're on the Housing Trust and Liz, you guys are, you know, delving into these things and immersed in it, I'd love to hear from you.
Well, I think Wayne's idea is a good one. I think we want to try to have a balance of fairness for the second homeowner and the resident. But also, I kind of like the idea of bringing the second homeowners into this process, because they tend to have more money and might be more willing to make an investment and increase the square footage of affordable housing, as long as we don't get into a situation where it just becomes another business for them and they're cranking away with it as a, doesn't help solve our local problem for housing.
I think that's going to be a tough call.
But I do think having, having the second homeowner in on it is good, it lowers that discrimination concern and gets more shoulders to the wheel to try to push this thing along.
Okay. All right, so
There are people up there.
Yeah, I will. All right, so who do we have, someone named, Peter Ungaro? Ungaro?
Thank you, Peter Ungaro, Housatonic Road. I wanted to make two comments specifically regarding the, the zoning bylaw itself and then the short-term rental. Obviously, a lot of good discussion. I'm actually in favor of ADUs, but I'd like to be very clear about a position on the zoning bylaw. Currently, there is no reference to domicile or owner-occupied condition or part-time or full-time status in the town of Stockbridge's zoning bylaws. And I would really urge the planning board to not set that precedent with this bylaw. I am encouraged by the discussion of focusing on making sure that we don't further commercialize STRs. I'm, again, in favor of ADUs based on zoning restrictions and use classifications that we want in this town, based on smart planning, but I am not in favor of any precedent that sets a restriction based on ownership and occupation of property. That's one. I'd also like to point everybody's attention to the existing town's short-term rental bylaw. Article 31, Section 4 Regulations, Item 4.1 says, "The following residential property is prohibited from being offered as a short-term rental." And Item C in that designation is "units that meet the definition of, quote, 'professionally-managed units' under Mass. General Law, Chapter 46G," sorry, 64G, Section 1. If you refer to that statement, it basically indicates that unless someone is operating as a primary residence, they cannot have more than one short-term rental in the town of Stockbridge. So half the problem is already solved by the existing short-term rental bylaw that's in place. So again, I urge the board to not conflate zoning, use, and allowing property to be developed, and the classification and handling of the commercialization of short-term rentals.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, sure.
I think that you, you make an excellent, excellent point. I totally forgotten about the, the provision on short-term rentals, I mean, on professionally-managed units that we put in. And I think that you're, you're correct in your analysis that, that would provide further protection against this. We have to have enforcement still, but, you know, but, but I think that that's a, that's a really good point. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Do I see another hand up there? It's Peter Stroud. Oh, Peter Stroud, did you want to speak again?
All, all I wanted to say was that I really liked the direction of this conversation, and, and call to the board's attention that there are, I think, three sub-units of use and dimensional regulations that currently include a restriction to primary residence and domicile. And I take it there is agreement that all three of those should be modified to eliminate that restriction.
So, Patrick, I actually, what I'm thinking about, Donna, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so I actually wanted to make a, a few comments, Patrick, in terms of some things I've been thinking about, but before I do that, Donna, it sounds to me like we, maybe a good approach here would be to, for you and Patrick to work on this some more, based on the input we've had here today, and then for us to continue the public hearing. Does that, does that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so here's, here are my comments, and then
Just, this is just one other point, though. I do think that we should maybe actually consider including Wayne's language in the bylaw, because a short-term rental is defined as less than 30 days.
Well, that's what
And I want to, and I want to make sure that people couldn't rent for 31 days and do a short-term rental. I think there's, are still some concerns and a reason why one rental unit at a time makes sense. You know, I think that Peter's point on professional managed units, I'm just now thinking it through, that, you know, because of the definition of a short-term rental, we have to also take a look at like a one-month-by-month, you know, summer rental.
How about you work on this with Wayne?
All right.
Okay? Wayne, you good with that?
I am.
Okay, good.
Cut the time away to do it.
I got, so here, here's my input, Patrick, and, one comment I have is that these are supposed to be accessory dwelling units. So 900 square foot sounds large to me. I looked at Concord, I think they do 750, 775, somewhere in there, and, you know, this is just, to me, I think scale really matters in Stockbridge. So I'd be interested in, you know, giving some thought to that. And then, the business of the entrance, I mean
Can we just do that one first? I defer to the board on the size.
Okay. And then, I also think it would be a really good idea to clarify upfront. Over the years, I've just seen it's really easy for people to get confused with these bylaws if things aren't spelled out really clearly. So what I would recommend is, I understand from, from Donna, that our, our existing bylaws take precedence here, and I think it would be really good to, you know, to clarify that really upfront in this bylaw, at the top of the marquee, so that's just, you know, that's just really clear to people.
Right.
So, that's
I think the language is there, though, from Patrick, that says that.
It is there, but I'm suggesting moving it up and, you know, putting it right up top so it's very clear and people understand when they start, you know, when these things, requests come in, they understand what the deal is here. It's just very clear. So that's, that would be my suggestion, and, you know, that, those are my comments on this. Otherwise, I like the idea of what, you know, Wayne has suggested. It sounds like you, you two can work together and work with Donna, and if someone from Housing Trust, Liz and Mark, you want to be involved, that's great, too. Okay?
Could, could I just ask one question to Donna? Is there anything out there that would help us with enforcement? It seemed like that was a little gray area as far as what you're recommending. Is there anything a little more substantial than doing a survey of the rental platforms that are out there?
So honestly, enforcement usually raises its head because somebody notices that there is a violation of the zoning bylaw going on by, by a different, you know, on a different property. That's how we usually find out about issues. And my colleague, Chris Heath, who's on the line, and he's going to be taking over for me shortly, he has a, a long history of working with Ned on enforcement issues, so we can see if maybe he can think of a, some kind of trick that would help us determine if somebody is violating the, the ADU bylaw or not, but I think it, it may be tough. As I said, if either unit can be rented, both of them are going to be listed on the online, online site, and only by looking at the calendars for the units are you going to ensure that they don't overlap.
Actually, Donna, we could make them, Donna, we could make them so that they can, that they must register one unit or the other with the town, given the flexibility to choose which unit they want, and then match that up in the system and say that's the only unit that can be rented. So, in other unit that can be rented. So in other words, you know, we, it just, as long as we, as long as the, as long as the, as long as the registration with the town matches the unit they're renting, it would be okay. You know, that's maybe a way around the either-or.
Town's messy.
Yeah. Okay, well, I want, okay, here's, so what I'd like is for Wayne, Patrick, and Donna to work on this. Mark and Liz, it'd be great if you want to be part of it, too. And with that, I am going to make a motion that we continue the public hearing until. I'm sorry?
I thought Christopher maybe wants.
Somebody's on.
Oh, no, that's the board. Sorry.
That's Chris Heath.
I had a couple of.
Okay.
Concerns. When we first started talking about the accessory dwelling, I thought it was to increase housing for, so we could bring in people who are lower, not lower income, but, you know, affordable for lower, for like a single person to live there. That's what I thought it was, like a long-term rental. That's what I understood ADUs to be. Now we're talking about short-term rentals. So is it the same ADU bylaw that would cover both short-term rentals and long-term rentals?
You know, I think that some homeowners, like, for example, Linda Shafroff, prefer non-short-term rentals. Because, you know, you got to change the sheets every night and you got to like, there's a lot of interventions in the room you got to do if you're going to do a short-term rental. Many people prefer regular rentals. But I think that this is written such a way that it empowers the homeowner to decide what type of rental is best for them.
Okay.
And so I don't think 100% are going to go short-term. But I also think that for the family that really wants to, you know, that, you know, if they're a couple hundred thousand short with like a qualifier and a mortgage, that the short-term rental option is going to be the quickest way to ensure they can close that gap and afford that house. And so I think having the most flexibility is maybe what we should try. But, you know, I mean, we could just make it so that no ADU could be used in a short-term rental, and we could limit it to that. I think that that'll mean a lot fewer conversions and maybe helping a lot fewer people kind of afford their house. So, you know, these are hard questions, though. I mean, you know.
Okay. Nancy, did you have another question or was that it?
No, that's, no, I do.
Okay. Randy?
Bring me page 28 straight. One thing I'm not clear about is how does it tie into Title V? Because like for somebody like us, if we were to utilize this bylaw, and I wouldn't be doing it for affordability, we would say we were to put an ADU above the garage for, like, one of our kids or something.
Yeah, it's a classic.
They start a family.
Yeah.
But how does it, I mean, our septic is already existing.
Yeah.
For a three-bedroom house, so.
You might have to expand it.
I think you'd always.
Yeah. Well, I think that's, 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 that's state law, obviously. Yeah.
And the bylaw is clear on all that? So when they go for a building permit, all that is built into it?
Oh, I can't imagine them getting a building permit without having necessarily the size septic system. I mean, you know, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So let me see. Who do we have? No one else there? I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing until a date certain of March 21st. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much, everyone. So next up. Yeah. Thank you, Donna.
Kate, yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Chris now.
Yep. Okay. Hi, Chris. Okay, so next up, we have the, oh, it's such a mouthful, the residential, let me get this out of the way, residential inclusionary development bylaw. I always think of Steve Martin and the Pink Panther when I try to read that. So let's see. All right. So back to the whole process. So I make a motion that we open the public hearing for the residential inclusionary development bylaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. So the same process, testimony limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter, one person speaking at a time, all discussion through the chair, stability, and no arguing. And this, Patrick is here, so Patrick and the select board also voted on this unanimously. And Patrick, would you like to, I guess I'll start by asking if anybody has any, from the board, has any questions?
Can we just acknowledge that there are certain things that the board asked us to take out at the last meeting? And, and, and that includes what was, let me just, you know, all the duplicative language talking about, I mean, 1.1.5 minimum requirements for exclusionary development, as well as all the way through to the dimensional, the end-of-dimensional requirements, numbers, all the way through numbers two and three, all the way down through parking, everything basically that was related to duplicative language around existing zoning would come out based on the feedback that you gave us at the last meeting. All the way down to 1.1.2. So, you know, I thought that was significant. I think that the other, the other question, I think that has been raised, because this was, was written in a more limited fashion around special permits.
I'm sorry, I don't remember removing all the wording. I don't remember that.
We didn't want to, you know, things like buffer areas, you know, from 1.1.5, 1.1.5 on.
Okay.
All right. The other thing is that when I wrote this, I limited it to projects that would require a special permit. Okay? So that means, now, there are, there are many projects, there are many, there are many potential developments in this town that include special permits, places like 37 AirLaken or Wheatley or Alencore or other cottageria states. However, that limits this to those types of developments. And I think one of the concerns we've raised is, that's been raised, is this is sort of a backdoor to edit the, you know, to change the cottage era bylaw. You know, a different direction we could go in if you want this to have broader applicability is to not make it conditional on just on special permit projects and basically make it for any project that is going to develop or subdivide 10 units or more. That's not how I wrote this. But we could consider that if there's a concern that this is sort of like, you know, limited or too focused on what would likely be cottageria state development. Yeah, I just throw that out there.
Okay. All right. So any, any questions from the board?
Is that, oh, go ahead, Marie.
No, go.
Is that, was that in your thinking? Because that's what it feels like. It's more related to the cottageria estate bylaw than it is anything else. Because it seems, just in the way it's described, that that may be where you were headed with it.
Yeah, I think it's likely, in fact, I know it's likely that the first one of these we'll get is a cottageria estate bylaw, is a cottageria estate.
Because the likelihood, like, I think you mentioned last meeting of it being elsewhere in another development, it's unlikely that.
I think it's very unlikely.
Some of the provisions that are in here would be used.
Yeah.
Or maybe, maybe not do it at all because they're required in, in this description. So I'm just curious on that, if that's where you were headed with it.
I mean, look, I think, I think, I think if this is a good idea, that starting with a relatively narrow application is actually not a bad idea. So that then we can see if it works and you want to expand it to the sort of more right subdivision, any proposed 10-unit subdivision or greater, you could expand it into that. But as this is written now, this is only applicable to special permit projects. So if somebody doesn't need a special permit, they don't need to come and do this. Now, you know, we could, we could change that. I think that we're going to have, with our existing needs for existing developments at, at Stockbridge Housing and Fire, I think we're looking at millions of dollars in potential needed investments. We're going to look everywhere we can for funding, state funding, federal funding, private grant funding. But I think that the reality is that having ways to fund that is really important based on some of the news that we've kind of heard from these places in the past several months.
Okay. So, one question, oh, Marie, you're next. No. Okay. One question I have is, so this is basically taken from Lennox, right?
Yeah.
So you had conversations with, was it Mary Beth Mitz? Was that it? Did you get any input from them? Like, you know, any, what works, what doesn't work, any, you know?
I mean, not so much. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's not, this is a typical, it is, it is not surprising to try to tie to large-scale development projects, medium-scale development projects, some kind of participation in affordable housing. That's what this is attempting to do. And, and I think that, that I'm completely open to suggestions on how to improve the language to meet that intent. As you all know, I'm not a lawyer, but I think this is an important conversation to have and to have it soon because of the potential that these projects could be in play. And we don't have potentially a lot of them. And if this is something the town wants to do, we should put it before the town quickly so that it's on the books. And if they don't want to do it, that's fine, they can vote it down. But to just wait and not do it and then have eventually these things kind of, you know, let's vote exercise, I'm concerned. Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
Did you mean hotel rooms in?
That was, that was, that was taken out the select board and Michael didn't upload the file. We.
It was taken off.
We took out all the references to hotels at the select board, and Michael never updated the file on, on.
Okay, so.
There was no reference to hotels in there. And that's, that's an area that I've been in there. Yeah, yeah, no. And, and that was at Donna's, Donna's recommendation. But I will say this, that if, for example, a cottageria estate project included a hotel development, we could conceivably make that a condition that we wanted to put in there. Yeah.
I just wondered if you really met that in there. It didn't sound like the rest of it.
Well, I mean, going back to the thing that I mentioned before when I was reading the wrong piece of paper, but the right of first refusal to purchase, I just don't
understand. What number is that?
It's under 1.114. And it's B. And, you know, the purchase of an affordable housing unit developer is a result of this bylaw, shall indeed to execute a deed right prepared by the town, consistent with prior rights prepared by the Department of Housing, granting among other things, the municipality's right of first refusal to purchase the property in the event that a subsequent qualified purchaser cannot be located.
This is only if.
I just find that confusing.
Yeah, this is only, but this is only if.
Yeah.
Somebody decides that, you know, they're going to build, you know, 40 units at, you know, at a, at a Taggart House, and they decide to put four of those units as affordable at Taggart House. All right. Now, obviously, they could build 40 units at Taggart House because it's way too small. But in that example, those units then have to stay affordable. And so there's a, there's a mechanism to make sure that if, if, if the, if the unit that is then.
This is to pick up the pieces for some retail.
What?
This is to pick up the pieces of.
This is if someone then goes to sell their unit that was affordable, then the town has the right to buy it, you know?
But they still have to sell it, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
That's okay.
So that means that they would have to sell it at an affordable price, so another affordable.
Yeah, so.
They couldn't raise the.
It'd be like a habitat house. So, for example, with a habitat house, you get to buy it at, you know, 80% of AMI and it stays on affordable rolls for 30 years. If a developer decides to build 40 units and four affordable units as part of that and keep them all in the same complex, then you got to have a mechanism to keep that on the affordable rolls and to make sure that as it turns over, that, you know, we want to, we want to have a say in, like, a lottery, maybe perhaps, and who gets to buy it, you know?
It still is affordable.
Just for the affordable units, just for the affordable units, yeah.
So the, the person who owns an affordable unit can't turn around and sell it for.
No, 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 no. It's on the affordable rolls and there's limits on, on what can then, you know, what the upside can then be.
And is it on our bylaw that they can't do that?
I think that that is, that's a good question.
Or is that a state regulation?
I think that's an excellent question. I imagine when I wrote this, that, or edited it, that, that the vast greater likelihood is that they'll pay in rather than designate units and, well, it's certainly be a luxury development for affordable. But I think it's a good question. You know, Christopher.
Chris?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. I noticed that in paragraph, section 1114, first paragraph, it says that "The resale control shall be established through a restriction on the property and shall be enforced in perpetuity." So there, there are regulatory agreements that would typically go in place for an affordable unit to make sure, as a matter of record, that the, that the affordability restriction will, will, will carry forward from, from one owner to the next. So I don't think it specifies exactly what that document is going to say, but there are certainly standard forms available at the state level that we could use.
And Chris, is it atypical that those, those, those conditions are in perpetuity? Or is it more typical that they sunset after a certain number of years? That was one of the questions I got.
It's funny, you know, this most typically comes up in comprehensive permit 40B developments, where there's often a regulatory agreement recorded against the project that will ensure affordability for, I think it's usually 25 or 30 years, at which point the restriction might lapse. These restrictions, in Massachusetts, under state law, there is, there is a limit on the length of deed restrictions that you can impose, but you can renew them over time. So typically in the 40B context, what would happen is that if, if the first regulatory agreement was only going to run for 25 or 30 years, you might have an additional permit condition in the comprehensive permit that says, once the first one expires, the applicant or the current owner at that time would need to record a new one. So.
But what is your, you know, I think what you're saying is that we have options to do either way. What do you see based on other canuses, the best practice here? What's the most reasonable thing?
There should be something recorded against the title to each and every affordable unit that says that it is, you know, if, if and when it is resold, it must be resold for, at a rate that is affordable to the next buyer. And it'll define what that is. And if that happens, and the property is conveyed every, you know, within 20 or 30-year window, that restriction would then get reimposed and carried forward for another.
But if they held it for 30 years, maybe the restriction goes away?
Actually, I'd have to think about whether, if it was held for that long, whether it would or would not. I don't, I don't, actually, I think there's a reason why it wouldn't go away, but I can't actually point you to what that exact reason is. We can certainly look at that.
Okay.
Steve has a.
I'll, I'll get there. I'll get to you, Steve. I know you're, I know you're immersed in this. So I will get to you. I just want to make sure the board has had a chance to, to ask questions. Has everybody had a chance?
Sorry.
Wayne, did you have something?
It's a little offshoot from what we're actually talking about, but if the, if the point of the matter is that we are trying to essentially create a mechanism that forces some percentage of property to be created affordably, I just think there's some other ways to go about doing that. And.
Mike?
Well, I think when you, if you look at a cottageria estate where you think this is really going to be used potentially, I, I just feel like our bigger advantage would be in negotiation with any developer that's doing that, in saying and kind of taking it on, you know, we're trying to force it on somebody else. Why don't we take this thing head-on and take control of it ourself? We keep wanting to make other people do it. I would sooner identify a piece of property in town. I know there's been talk of some individuals potentially donating a piece of property. And I would, I would think it would be to the benefit of all to have a developer, when his crews are here, to say, yes, okay, well, we're going to, we're going to work with you. here, but at the same time that you're doing your development, you're also going to build us some workforce housing on this piece of property. A negotiation, a hand in hand negotiation, not an argument, not a, no, you're not coming here, or come on in, do whatever you want. It's a negotiation. That's the power we have in these different discussions. And I think one of the ways would be to, to work with a developer and say, this is what we're looking for. What can you do for us in this area? And there's other areas for negotiation, but in this one in particular, I think there's a, it would be a great place to either start or include in conversation.
And so would you envision maybe more flexibility, whereas instead of the necessary, if it were legal, Chris, or maybe instead of requiring affordability, we maybe require house, housing production at a certain price point for the community? You know, I mean, I think that that's actually quite an interesting idea. I think we will have to kind of figure out if, if, you know, what that looks like. I don't, and I personally don't care if they build on the same property as the cottage or they acquire a parcel, like you're saying. I think that though, that, that there are going to be, I mean, frankly, what I'm concerned about is the three to five million at today's prices that we need to put in Pinewood's, and that might escalate with the, with the rising cost of construction. I mean, I, I, I do think that, that, you know, that workforce, workforce housing will help us absolutely, and maybe even help us more than more of our affordable units. I'm not thinking, though, that we're doing some giant expansion of, of affordable housing. I think we've got a whole lot of work to do with the affordable housing we already have.
And, and just to continue on that, just so it's not, I don't know really how you control cost that way, but I, I would strongly want it to be self sustaining. I don't want to have to have help from the state to continue it or from the town, but maybe the town initially, we could create, you know, funding so that either the land, if it's not donated, could be identified and purchased, and that we'd have some capital money to include as part of our side of the bargain.
Yeah.
So Patrick, what about, I realize Pinewood's is privately owned, correct? But Heat and Court, would it, what about the possibility of having funds directed towards the Stockbridge Housing Authority and Heat and Court? Because every year, you know, we are paying for, whether it's out of Community Preservation Act funds, you know, we are paying for the upkeep there. White Pines is a possibility too, obviously.
White Pines?
I mean.
Oh, Pinewood.
Pinewood.
Yeah. I think that right now, the, the only realistic, you know, you know, look, I could see if Habitat or Community were interested in coming in and doing a unit here or there, that would be owner, owner occupied, you know, affordable housing. I think aside from that, the charge of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the next several years is going to be figuring out and dealing with Pinewood's and making sure that those units don't sunset. There's a lot of money that's going to be needed and a lot of work to make sure that those stay livable. You know, we had, you had the building inspector and the fire chief in there last Friday, you know, you're, we've got some work to do there. And I think that is the focus realistically, and that this would be one way to fund some of those needed investments.
Okay. All right. Any more questions from the board and then I'll get to the audience? No? All right. So Steve, I think you've been waiting quite a while to speak to this. No? No? Nothing? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
We're going to speak from here.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Steve Shatz, Spiedmore Church. I, I find myself in the position of certainly supporting the, the whole notion of, of affordable housing and inclusionary provisions, but at the same time, finding the draft bylaw, even as revised tonight, to be less than satisfactory. But I think fixable. Going back now to 2015, after we concluded with the issuance of a special permit to Almecourt, there was very clear throughout that, those proceedings, of that what was missing from the Cottage Estate's bylaw, among other things, was a mandatory set aside for affordable housing. We couldn't do it because the application had been filed before a public hearing on any proposal to, to create such a provision, such an amendment to the Cottage Estate's bylaw. There were other matters that became apparent also throughout the deliberations over the special permit. And what the board that I served on at the time decided to do was to draft a revision to the Cottage Estate's bylaw, which does include a mandatory 10% set aside with options. And the options are not as similar from what you see in the draft that you have here, although there is one other option that Wayne has just brought up that's kind of intriguing. Although there is a reference, Wayne, I will tell you, in that, in that draft bylaw change, that says that the, the affordable housing unit does not necessarily have to be built on that site. So what this bylaw looks like, because it's limited solely to properties requiring special permit for development, essentially comes down to three properties, and maybe only two, being Almecourt, assuming that that special permit lapses and some subsequent owner decides to go through a special permit process again. The former Desisto property, and I was not aware of the fact that, that weakly falls within the ambit of the.
20 acres.
But I accept that, Patrick, if that's incorrect, that it's more than 80 acres and it existed in 1928. I don't remember when.
1890.
There's some days more than 80. So, you know, just, you know, there are three properties. And the simplest thing to do, since we're only dealing with special permit properties, is to amend the existing bylaw. Don't go through all of this to deal with three properties when the rest of the properties in town are, are not affected by this at all. Now, there are other problems, even if it is limited solely to the Cottage Estate's bylaw properties. And Carla, you, you've raised it, you've raised one of them, that the provisions for the right of first refusal, the payment of.
Right.
Very unclear. And that, this has to be set out in a somewhat rational form, and I think that, I understand, you know, what's, what the goal is. The goal is to ensure affordability for those units for some period of time. In perpetuity is a problem, as the lawyers on this call, I think, understand that the law in Massachusetts does not favor that kind of restraint on alienation, and which is generally why you see 30 year restrictions, which can be extended under certain circumstances. In perpetuity is a problem because you can't finance those units. You don't know what's going to happen, and this bylaw, proposed bylaw does not deal with issues of catastrophic loss. Who gets the money? Are the units to be rebuilt? How do you mortgage something that has a restriction on it that lasts in perpetuity? What are the rights of the mortgage holder? I think thought has to be given to those things, because what we're talking about is homeownership. And people who buy these homes, even if they fall within the, come within the ambit, the description of, you know, about 80% of median income, are also entitled to have the benefits of homeownership and the rights, which includes, and the opportunity to mortgage, to make improvements, to have some opportunity for, for the savings that accrues with increases in market value. And what we're talking about here is just simply allowing people to, to spend their own money, because they can't get a mortgage on a property that's, that's restricted in perpetuity, we may as well turn these into rental units. There's no reason to have homeownership under those circumstances. Now, what the device, that is the restrictions on, on, I'm slipping, because that's what we're talking about here, slipping these kinds of units, these houses, have existed in housing development for, actually since the creation of the Public Housing Acts in, during the depression, during the Great Depression. And the disposition, the resale of land held by state and federal agencies during that time and, and through to this day, provided in many cases for the resale of land, for the redevelopment of housing, with affordable housing restrictions on them that would last, I've seen anywhere from 10 to 20 years. In the case of just to pick a 20 year restriction, if the house were to be sold in the first, typically the first five years, 100% of the difference between the cost basis and the sale price would go back to the governmental authority. And that money in turn would be reused to produce more affordable housing. That would slide down over the course of the next 15 years. Little under 7% a year, I guess, is the correct math. And you could do something like that, and it's more predictable. It gives people the opportunity so that when they buy in, they also have the, the right to obtain some of the benefits of the ownership of that house, perhaps, you know, their income's going to change, and they may want to go someplace else.
Okay.
And if they go someplace with nothing else.
Thank you.
Want to hear the rest of it?
If, you know, I'd like to keep, keep things moving if you can finish soon, Steve, please.
Well, I, I will make every effort to.
Thank you.
So, I mean, that's essentially it. I mean, I think this, I don't think this bylaw is necessary. I think what is necessary is a rewrite of the Cottage Estate's bylaw.
Can we?
Thank you.
Steve, can we, do you think we can get that, get that done? Is it more complex than a simplified version of this? Because we have, you know, like you said, you've got to, you've got to have the bylaw in place before the thing gets developed. That was a problem we had in 2015. So, you know, I mean, I'm trying to get something on there.
I, I, I'm not, you know, you'll have to ask the planning board that question. I don't.
Yep.
And, and one other question.
Not for me to answer.
One other, I've got one other question, since you brought it up. Would it simplify this if simply there was a payment into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, rather than having all these options around development that makes it much more complex, and let the Affordable Housing Trust Fund figure out how to deploy it, whether it existing or in building something new, because they're going to have to follow all those rules that you're talking about?
May I answer the question?
Sure.
Thank you. Payment to the Housing Trust Fund was, was the least desirable of all of the options. Because the experience with housing trust funds throughout Massachusetts is that the funds never get used to build housing, or for that matter, to underwrite the cost of, of housing purchase. And that is something you can confirm with DHCD. It's, the experience just isn't a good one, which is why there were those of us who really were not very much in favor of using that as a device, but so be it. So don't think of each of those options as being equal or not.
Who do you think is the best?
Sorry, one last question.
You build, you build units. That's, that's what we need. We need.
Quick question for you though, before you go. When you talk about the cost basis and then what that unit might sell for 10 years from now, and that person can, does the person essentially only get what they paid for the house? Or do they receive some of the increase in the value of that place when they do that?
Well, the constructs where, there are, there are constructs that, that provide the homeowner with nothing other than the original cost. And I'm just suggesting that we ought to be looking at a different way, a different approach to this, where, where the homeowner is able to derive some of the benefits, reap some of the benefits of the appreciation of real property.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Josh, come on up.
Josh Payron, 62, Interlake Road. If a developer has to throw money to the town because he doesn't want undesirable development on their property, which is market rate housing in a residential area, which means everybody around that area is undesirable, then isn't the real problem that you have toxic and destructive zoning in the town and the planning board should be working on that zoning? So what is the status of the cottage bylaw zoning? In other words, the town had a professional planner for $25,000. The town got $30,000 to $40,000 twice at two town meetings. So you're going for just $400,000 or over $100,000 of thoughtful planning for the town. So what is the explanation of the zoning after $100,000 thrown at this? You had two, two plans that were described to the town by planners. We have a cottage bylaw. There is zero explanation. So my, well, my, my point is, if somebody has to do what Patrick wants them to do, to throw money to the town so you can warehouse people and claim that somebody lives here, what good is your zoning in that area? It's toxic and it's destructive, and that's what the planning board should be working on. But I have no idea what the, what the zoning for this cottage bylaw is now, other than it was rejected by the diagnostic and the people. Mr. Russell was never allowed to present his work, which is all my feedback for the board members if they care what the people think. So I, this, this cottage bylaw, to me, it was left in limbo. There is no explanation for it.
Okay. Thank you, Josh.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay. So we've gotten some feedback at this point, and does the board want to see more work done on this? You know, what are your thoughts? Do you want to, as with the accessory dwelling units, do you want to continue the public hearing, see some more work done on this? Or would you like to move forward with it?
I think we probably need, need to extend it and work more on it. I, I think we're not really in agreement.
That's my sense.
Here, in general.
What's, what's the deadline for submitting this?
There's no deadline. We, we really want to get things right, so there's no deadline here. Basically, we just, if we want to see more work go, go into this, all we need to do is continue the public hearing to a date certain. And so what I would suggest is that you've, you've heard the input here tonight, and give some thought to that. And I guess my input to you, Patrick, would be to, to look for a way forward that isn't overly complicated. I know that can be a, a tough call. And keep in mind the challenges of bringing new, you know, of working out a bylaw like this, okay?
Well, I have a question. Christopher, is there somebody at the R S Harrington that can be our, our direct point person? You've probably heard all the feedback tonight. And some of these questions are frankly beyond my skill set.
Absolutely.
I would like to request help. And I would also like to request if there's anybody on the board that wants to be part of this conversation, the back and forth. And Steve, if you have the time, I would very. And Steve, if you have the time, I would very much appreciate if we could CC you on all these correspondence. You have so many good ideas here. And, 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 you know, this stuff is, this stuff is, you know, when you have, when you have an entire career in legal work, maybe it seems like second nature to you. Like, well, there are mortals. I only tracked about 80% of what you guys were saying tonight. I would really appreciate helping getting this right. I'm going to bring this to.
Okay, Patrick, thank you.
All right.
Liz is on the Housing Trust.
Yes.
Is this something that you can work on with Patrick?
I don't know if I have the time. I am so stretched out at this point.
Okay.
I'll be honest.
Okay. Okay.
I'll work on it.
Marie, great.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right. So with that, unless I have any further comments or questions or anything, I am going to make a motion that we continue the public hearing for the residential inclusionary development bylaw until a date certain of March, what did I say, 21st?
21st.
March 21st. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're going to come up the same time again, right?
Yeah. Both at the same.
Makes sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does.
I know it's hard, but don't worry. Romo's there.
No, no, I, yeah, I'm not worried about time. I'm just worried about so much in one night.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Mark, Nancy. Steve? Okay, can you guys, we, we still have work to do, so can you guys take it outside?
I thought you were adjourned.
No, we're not. We're not adjourned at all. Okay. You know, good work. All right, so next up, we have the sign bylaw. So I make a motion that we open the public hearing for the sign bylaw. And same procedures as before. I will mention that we had very, very late an email from someone named, from Mackinac Heights, someone by the name of Joseph Newberg.
Oh, I didn't write here.
Right. So, again, same procedures. And any questions for the board here? Does anybody have any questions for the board? Okay. Okay. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, Madam Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you fine.
Great. My name is Joe Newberg. I live in Mackinac, 20 Mackinac Heights. As you mentioned, I sent you a letter because I just, a short time ago, because I just, a short time earlier today, learned of this hearing and this subject matter. I have a concern about the proposed signs by law. And why, to just sum it up, why is there no carve-out grandfathering, explicit at least, or, or at least tailored treatment for the various homeowners associations around the lake? For example, Mackinac Heights, Mackinac Shores, Beechwood, just to name a few, all of which already have their own custom signage, some abutting town roads, some abutting so-called private roads within the various communities. These signs were designed and placed at considerable effort and expense vetted for consistency and suitability within the various associations mentioned, and installed often in consultation and cooperation with the highway department. But yet, under the proposed bylaw, which doesn't mention these at all, all such signs seem to become instantly illegal, requiring at least special permitting by the planning board. That may be a morass the planning board doesn't wish to endure, especially with no apparent benefit to anyone of doing so. And if the, but if, you know, the board does wish to do so, what standards is it seeking to impose on these communities so they can determine how to comply and why? Now, admittedly, most of the people who occupy the communities I mentioned, and there are others, Lake Drive, Mackinac Terrace, I'm not familiar with their signage. I'm sure they have some. But this, this is coming up a little below the radar in the off-season, if you know what I mean. And, and it may not be something, I don't think it's something you intend to do. But I think it's going to be very injurious and a big headache to us. So I, I wish you could maybe either slow this down or take a broad exemption or just stick it to the, you know, limit it to the town center for now. But at least, you know, give some consideration and a chance to reflect more, come up with a more refined product by reflection on this and considering this input. Thank, thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, I'll just respond to a couple of the ideas here. So the board started working on this bylaw, which is an existing bylaw on the books, last summer. We, we embarked on this project with the idea of making the language clearer and easier for board members as well as applicants to work with. We were not looking at making changes to the actual policies in the bylaws. We were simply looking to clarify wording. And in terms of the signs that you, you're bringing up, a lot of them would be considered pre-existing non-conforming signs, and hence would be allowed. So what you're referring to is grandfathering, we now call pre-existing non-conforming. So I will let Chris Heap speak to that. But my understanding from a conversation I had earlier with Town Council Donna Brewer is that those would be allowed. In terms of the timing, again, we started in on this last summer. And, you know, of course, you're aware, we have our annual town meeting in May. And the warrant is, is something that is probably currently being discussed and in the works and at the slideboard level. So in terms of these bylaw changes and proposals, we're, we are a little bit on a, on a schedule. And I don't believe that it was anyone's intention to, to, to bring forth something out of, out of season in terms of when, when the second home population is typically here. This, this has, I believe, been covered in stockage updates as well, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure. So I'm going to, Chris, I'm going to.
May I say something, may I say something in response to this? Which I appreciate your, your, your comments. This wasn't intentional. I get that.
I'd just like to get an answer from, from our town council, from Chris Heap, who's, who's town council, on the, the idea of pre-existing non-conforming signs.
Sure. Thank you, and thank you. So anytime you amend zoning, zoning, the, the change to the zoning that is approved by town meeting won't apply retroactively to go back and, and, and go at any existing uses or structures that predate, you know, the adoption of the new zoning. So if, to, to whatever extent this amendment of the sign bylaw renders any particular sign that already exists non-conforming, that sign would be allowed to remain in place effectively forever. If, if you ever wanted to expand it, alter it, or, or do anything to it, you might need to go to the ZBA to get a permit authorizing that expansion or alteration. But, but the, the existing, the existing structure and the existing use would remain protected from any bylaw change that's adopted.
Thank you, Chris, but I have another observation here. This seems to prohibit the signs, not just to, you know, even if the existing signs in their current state are, you know, accepted and are grandfathered and are, can be, you know, upkept and so forth. This bylaw says that the only directional signs that are non-accestrary signs, which I take this to be allowed are municipally-owned directory signs. So I don't think we could get a special permit to put any one of these road signs that we have within the community, you know, safety signs, slow children signs, and that sort of thing, unless they're owned by the town. And we have a combination of both town and custom design tags, signs. We actually work with the town, have worked with the town even very recently to make sure we coordinate the signs and try to get the same, you know, color scheme, white with green letters and all that sort of stuff. I mean, we've put a lot of effort into that. And other, other communities around town have put in major investments into their, you know, the Beechwood sign and the Mackinac Shore sign on the road saying, this is our exit, this is our entrance. And I don't know why on earth the town would want to make that more complicated, prohibit it by being owned by the association or anything like that. So I have question, really, you know, maybe there are technical questions about this, but someone should take a look around these communities. There may be things the town doesn't like about this for some reason. Although, like I say, these have been vetted within, you know, these are historic communities that nobody, no monarch does these things. The community has to agree and all that sort of stuff. Nobody is, that I know of has complained about these upgrades and improvements.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Newberg. I appreciate your comments. Patty Kaya, you have a comment?
Well, I have a question. So I understand this concept of pre-existing non-conformity. But based on what town council just said, I just wanted one clarification if possible. So I'll give you an example of Mackinac Heights because it'll explain why I don't understand it. So this idea that we would be sort of grandfathered in, but if we changed the signs, we would no longer be under that clause? Because, so for example, we had these old signs from, I swear they were probably from the 1950s. And then maybe five years ago, we replaced all the signs, and they're all new and they're all different. But they're all like road signs and welcome to the height signs and that kind of thing. So I, I think from what I heard from council was that if we did the same thing in 10 years, we would have to actually go through this special permit process that Joe Newberg's concerned about because we would actually be altering those signs. Is that accurate?
And the signs aren't permitted, Patty.
One at a time, please.
So you understand what you're writing.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Please, comments one at a time and through the chair, please.
If, if town council would be willing to extrapolate just a tiny bit based on my example, just for clarity, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
So I will answer one of your questions, Patty. This current bylaw has been on the books now since 2012, when I joined the, when I joined the board or shortly thereafter. If you have changed the signs and never come before the board for a sign permit, you're probably out of compliance.
Well, I'm not representative of my organization, so I actually don't know the exact date. So I'm just going to say like they were updated and leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any more comments? Okay, great. So let's see. Is everybody bored? How do you feel? Are you ready to close the public hearing? And
Did we answer? Did we answer?
Right. We had a question for Chris that I don't think Chris ever answered.
Okay, Chris, can you answer the question that was not answered?
So I don't think I can answer the question definitively without understanding.
I think we need dates and so on.
The specifics of when the sign was, was constructed, what the zoning applicable at that time was, and what changes you, you want to make. But for purposes of expanding or altering a non-conforming structure or use, there are some changes that would probably be considered so de minimis that it didn't need any permit whatsoever. It could be done as a matter of right. If, but if you were increasing the size of a non-conforming structure or if you were somehow substantially expanding the use, you would need to go to the ZBA for a permit to authorize that expansion or alteration.
Thank you.
It's hard to say in the abstract whether any particular change would, would sort of fall under that, under that threshold or exceed it.
Right. So Patty, it seems like we would need more specifics, dates, and so on. So.
Curiosity, I mean, how non-conforming are these signs that we're talking about specifically here? I mean, I really have no.
I don't think anybody's ever come before us to, with a sign permit, to be honest with you, since I've been on the board.
But I mean, I've been, in my recollection, driving by there, it's like, those are, like, they're not, they're not.
I mean, I think this goes to the earlier conversation, Mr. Newberg, which is that, you know, by and large, we are complaint-driven. We are typically not driving around Beechwood or Mackinac Heights
Yeah.
looking for problems. So, you know, I, I realize this is fascinating stuff. But from our standpoint as a planning board, we're typically working on the business that comes before us. And, you know, I, I just would be very surprised to find, find somebody coming before this board complaining about a directional sign, which directional signs, by the way, are, are allowed in this bylaw down in Beechwood or Mackinac Shores. So, you know, I, that's just my comment there. Does anyone else have a question or?
I had a question, not of anybody there, of us. Is there, does a distinction between a private road and a town road?
I asked about that, and I was surprised. I thought, you know, a private road was like not our, not our business. But apparently, Chris, Donna seemed to indicate that private roads do, do count. Does that sound right to you?
For purposes of zoning, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
For signage.
For signage, yep, so zoning.
General.
Zoning in general.
Yeah.
Should a zoning bylaw have to put that in there somewhere?
All right. So if everybody is ready to, to move forward, then I make a motion that we close the public hearing and move.
For signs.
For signs, yep. And move to deliberative discussion with the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. All right. So now is the part where we haven't been able to get to with the other two bylaws. But now where we, oh, there's one thing we need to address, so I may need to reopen the public hearing. And that is Jennifer brought this up. We had Nancy, we had changed it to board of select, select board, the board of selectmen to select board. Apparently, because the rest of the zoning bylaw has select board of selectmen, it has to be uniform. So we can't do that.
Oh.
That's a change. So Chris, do I need to reopen the public hearing now?
No, I think, I think, I think, I think you're fine, having, having, having announced it.
Okay, so I'm letting you all know that we don't get to do that this time. We would need to address that globally in the zoning bylaw, and I really hope we can.
Gotcha.
So, all right. So any other, any, you know, deliberation you guys want to have?
I had a question.
Yeah.
It's the very last sentence. Section 6.816, section D.
Yeah. The enforcement.
Section will be enforced by the building inspector or by a designee of the permit issuing board pursuant to section 8.4. What does that mean?
Good question.
One of us?
I guess.
Is that your badge?
Let's look at 8.4. It's not going to be me. Hold on, let's take a look at 8.4. Chris, do you happen to? No.
Well, I note that it's existing language, so it's, it's, it's been in there for, I think that, I think that's existing language in the bylaw. So that, that's been there for a while. It does strike me, and what it appears to say is that I believe the planning board or designee could engage in enforcement against signs. So given that it's on the books already, it don't, it need not be changed. But it does strike me as at least a little unusual because in most circumstances, I wouldn't want anybody other than Ned to be enforcing this bylaw.
I think we're fine because if you look at 8.4, it looks like it's the zoning, I mean, it looks like it's the building inspector.
If he declines to act, he shall notify in writing the party requesting. If he declines to act, he shall notify in writing the party requesting such enforcement of any action or refusal to act and the reason thereof within 14 days. It doesn't say.
I, I think it just refers to the, the building inspector, so I think we're okay.
You could pick it. Kate just said we don't go around looking for this kind of.
Right, right.
All right, so, you know, so again, a reminder that what we're voting on here tonight is not the actual bylaw. Thank you for reminding me of that, Nancy, or Marie, whoever. We're actually voting on a recommendation to the town meeting, right, Chris?
Yes.
Right. Okay, so, you know, we've worked on.
This wording will go on the board. That's what we're voting on.
We're voting on, actually, we're voting on a recommendation to the town meeting that they accept this wording is, is what I would say. So I'll make a motion that we make a recommendation to the town meeting that the sign bylaw, administrative changes, really, that's all they are, be accepted.
So I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, great. So with that, I make a motion.
Aren't you going to have something else you wanted to say?
Well, we have to close.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, yeah.
So Chris, are we done, or do I need to close this?
No, you closed the hearing. You voted your recommendation to town meeting, and.
Thank you, Chris.
The other two are continued. You're, I think you're good.
Hey, now I have my very exciting administrative announcement. I've been waiting all night for this. So I think that any planning board member who is willing to sit through three public hearings on their birthday deserves to be honored and thanked. And I have a birthday cake here. So we are going to have birthday cake, and I'm so sorry, everybody, that you did not get to like chow down with us. But I am, we're going to do the minutes next. And then anyone who wishes is going to have a birthday cake, and we're going to call it night. So minutes, does everyone have had a chance to, to review those?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, birthday cake.
Thank you, everybody.